Kim, you ready?
Call to order the planning and zoning meeting for Monday, December 16th, 2024. Kim, can you do roll call?
Can you hear me? So Mr. Kouskoudis is out, Mr. Vessi is out, Ms. Bellis is out, Ms. Francese.
Here.
Mr. Rockline.
Here.
Ms. Early.
Here.
Ms. Swenson.
Here.
Ms. Weaver.
Here.
And should we do attorney indictment, a vote to motion to excuse the absences?
To do what?
A motion to excuse the absences.
Yeah, that'd be fun, yeah.
Second. Well, we're best of the motions for us, so. Yes. You want to take the roll call, Kim?
What was the motion? I'm sorry.
To excuse the.
Excuse those that are.
Yeah.
Okay, who made the motion?
Myself.
And I seconded.
Okay. Are you allowed to check? Second as a chair?
So, do the pledge of allegiance? Mr. Vessi's not here to do the invocation, Mr. Rockline, would you like to?
Yes, thank you Chairman, Jailwoman. Let's just all remember that this time of year is about giving, because to some degree, we all receive. Sometimes it's just automatic and you don't notice it anymore, but the giving has to be conscious, the giving has to be originated inside oneself, and giving to our city that we know and love and chose to live is a privilege, and I think it's something that we all feel that we need to do, that we want to do, and that in itself is a blessing because the volunteerism, you know, civically is notably low, but let's wish for peace and health and happiness for all those in the community and the continued recovery from those who struggled from the storms.
We only have one thing on the agenda tonight, under ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 2024-01, Land Development Code Amendment, amending Article 7, Heritage Preservation and Providing for Creation of Neighborhood Conservation Overlay Districts, Application 22-112, which is a legislative item, and Pat?
Okay, this is an ordinance to be added to Article 7, your heritage preservation article in the Land Development Code for adding to the ability to create something called a neighborhood conservation overlay. You have seen this in discussion in April and in a later, more developed draft in September of this year, so this is coming back with a final draft. You, well, this went to the Heritage Preservation Board on Monday December 2nd, I think, at the last HPB meeting, so they have reviewed it, they had one recommended change. But just to kind of recap what the purpose is, this is really a framework for recognizing and preserving historic and cultural character and identity in existing developed areas, and that is part of the purpose that's stated on page 23 in section 11801. So it's kind of intended to be a historic light, if you will. This is to provide the ability to start to preserve some of these neighborhood characteristics without immediately going to a full-blown, very specific, very detailed historic district, like the one, which is what we have downtown, the historic district, so it's a little less stringent. Right now, it's starting with guiding demolition and addition, new additions and new construction, so that's kind of the first things on the list that we have to choose from, and it goes from there to establish standards where the community would choose to regulate more if they want to or not. The format of this element is set up really to provide a process. It uses the existing framework very well, so it's a good method to get in place to set up this process. Each neighborhood conservation overlay would be adopted as a new district or new overlay in Article 7. And then the tables that are on in section 118 toward the end of the ordinance, like page 23, 24, those would be amended when a new NCO is established, and the NCO would state, hey, we want to regulate demolition, we want to regulate new construction, we also want to regulate doors and windows, or something like that. That's kind of where it's going, so the article would be amended each time an overlay is added. The existing certificate of appropriateness process is the one that's established to be used. I mean, it doesn't mean that a future neighborhood conservation overlay can't, if it goes this far, designate their own board or their own review process, but in the absence of that, we've got the existing process that can be used to to carry out the NCO purpose, and there could be guidelines or not, but we do have an existing working framework with a board that reviews these things frequently, new addition, demolitions, and right down to signs, all the fences, all those things, so we do have a good framework in place. We did receive comments from Tina Bukavallis. She provided written comments and the responses are in your packet. I'll be glad to answer any questions on that. We also provided verbal comments at the Heritage Preservation Board meeting. They had this at two other meetings, the first one was November 4th, from Cindy Terrapani, and then she followed up with some written comments at the last meeting. One change we did note that she pointed out was the 500-foot mailed radius for appeals, still said 200 feet. We had changed all the mailed notice radii a couple of years ago, probably 2018, and that one was missed, so we went ahead and made that revision in the ordinance before you tonight, that's on page 12. And then there were additional comments, really, that we had, most of our discussion at HPB was about the 51% of property owners, how they weigh in on these NCOs. The Heritage Preservation Board specifically asked that on page 6, I believe, yeah. Page 6, this is section 108(c) and 108(d). 108(c) applies to petitioning for designation, it calls for 51% of the land area. And then 108(d) talks about providing evidence of support from at least 51% of the owners. HPB wanted those to be consistent and they wanted to use owners, so that was the only change they recommended. As we discussed at HPB, one feature of this, you may have noticed, is all of these designations, this is just being added to the types of designations you can do, landmarks, sites, historic districts, now neighborhood conservation overlay. They all require a legal published notice for the HPB and a public hearing at HPB. They all have to be done by ordinance, so that means you would also, this board would have legal public notice and a hearing, and then the Board of Commissioners have two hearings for ordinances, so there's a lot of process and hearings that would go on with these. Just wanted to kind of point that out. And I don't really have anything else, I think most of you are familiar with. And those that aren't, I mean, this whole thing kind of started, kind of evolved from the Greek Town Sponge Dock study that we did. This idea was put forward, it sounded like a great idea to get a framework in place to start to protect different neighborhoods that might want to come in and look at preserving their identity, their character. So that's how this started. So I'll be glad to answer any questions or go through the ordinance, however you want to.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions for staff? Anybody else? I just have one question, did something change? Because I know we reviewed it a couple of times and then went to HPB, and I think there's something in there about 51% of the land owners? Like, it's not property owners, but like people that own 51% of, I guess, the land of the, and I'm not sure if, maybe I just missed that in the beginning, or if that changed along the way?
Well, actually, okay, so on pages 5 and 6, talks about the process for designating an NCO, that's section 108.
Okay.
Section C is who can petition for this, who can petition the, basically, the Board of Commissioners to do this. One of the choices that's written there, one of the choices is owners of basically 51% of the land area, okay? And then the next section is that the designation, the petition should include 51% of affected property owners.
Okay.
Support from, so they do kind of conflict a little bit, because, you know, it's a 10-acre district, five people own five of the acres and 25 people own the other, you know, it would be different as far as what a majority would be, whether you use land area or number of owners.
Is there a distinction between commercial and residential?
No, not in this, whoever's proposing their overlay geographic area would include everything, unless.
I mean, I think that if there isn't a distinction, I feel like it would completely die without a distinction between, because the priorities are so different, I mean.
Yeah, and overlay could be proposed as only regulating residential or commercial. I don't see why not, that would be one of the criteria.
Because, I mean, I remember the last meeting, I think it was broken into Greek Town and the Sponge Docks, like, that was the distinction, was the docks. Sponge Dock was the commercial, Greek Town was the residential, I think that was a good compromise.
Yeah.
Because I think we'll get more accomplished. I don't want to see all this work go to nothing with combining the two.
Yeah.
We spent too much money and too much time going back and forth, you know?
Yeah.
Pat, wouldn't the border then be adaptable to be set to what, you know, the landowners would like it to be? In other words, they would have the opportunity to include or exclude, you know, slivers, say excluding residential, or the residential people excluding commercial, so it would become its, you know, they would be ownership of what the district would be and why, more or less.
I mean, this sets up the framework, but I think that's what we heard
Right.
at the Greek Town workshops especially, is, yeah, that the landowners want to really weigh in on the geographic area, what's regulated, how much.
Right.
So.
Yeah, the Greek Town Sponge Docks, you know, differentiated is a perfect example, and the land area, that's, that could be problematic, because you could have one property owner that owns 51% of vacant land, and then you have, as you said, 40 other property owners that own little slivers, and guess what, that one person with the one business on all that unused area would have the most say, so I think there needs to be some sort of better balancing or better definition, or, you know, agreement that people are aware of what it could, you know?
Yeah, and we could even provide that information, so, you know, yeah, depending on the geographic area, so let's say we wanted to hear from 51% of the people in that geographic area, we could easily pull those, and this stuff is all pulled from property appraiser and say, you know, here's some extra information, you know, Mr. Jones owns, you know, five acres and, you know, Mrs. Smith owns, you know, a 5,000-square-foot lot, like that, so that's just extra information that could be provided.
Can I interrupt you? I just want to ask, do we have a procedure by which property owners will designate who the voting person is for that property or that business?
It would have to be owners and we would use the property appraiser. Records, whoever, wherever the tax bill goes, the owner, listed owner of the property.
Well, I mean, if you have four owners of a property, who's voting?
Whoever they designate as their spokesperson.
No, that's what I meant.
Your reason is a good point.
Do we have a form?
So, yeah, and Andrew can jump in if we need, the way I picture this is, you know, we, either they get authors, you know, some kind, like we do right now for an affidavit, for everything you guys look at, we get an owner affidavit if somebody wants to apply and they're not the owner. And we check to see, is that the listed owner on property appraiser, if it's an LLC? We go to SunBiz and say, you know, and if there's a question, we we look it up, or we call them, or whatever, yeah, there's usually an agent or.
But I think that the intent is one vote per property, right? Is that the intent? So, if there's a definition section or something like that, we can put that in there to be clear, because frequently, there are many people on deed, and, or it could be a corporation, and how deep into that corporation do you really want to go? So I think we need to make it absolutely clear that it means one vote for either parcel or whatever the definition is under the property appraiser.
Okay, we can do that, and also, this 51% applies to the petition. It is not a requirement to pass the ordinance, so I don't know how, you know, detailed we get on, you know, trying to follow this owner trail. I think, you know, we would rely on the people and the appraiser, the data we have, we wouldn't probably dive too deep into it. If the board wanted to, Board of Commissioners wanted to, they could go down that road, but this is just to bring a petition forward.
Ms. Swenson, did you?
Yeah, better? So is this altering the process for a citizen in the district to apply for some kind of variance? Or is the variance ordinance is somewhere else?
It would not alter the city's variance process under the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, so this is strictly. Okay, so this is strictly just changing basically lines on a map? For inclusion or exclusion?
This is setting up a process by which someone can propose. Lines on a map, yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
And just wanted to point out too that. To Attorney Dickman's point, you know, that's I think why Ms. Terri Pannie had pointed out that. That that's kind of not the norm to have the property owners vote themselves in because it does get rather complicated. Cause they're not all LLCs and you don't know, like the property that my family has is four people and it's, they're not on the property. You know, it's, it's kind of an invitation to a mess. And then you have property for sale down there, if someone buys that, all of a sudden they own the most and they just walked in. So, I don't know if, I think when we initially looked at it, it sounded like it was a good idea because we hadn't like known. And then when we found out that downtown just was put in there by somebody else, so. I think that she made a really good point that that's just not how it's usually done. Again, I, I don't want all the work that we've put in to try to be organized and, and create a district to be. For nothing to, because it's made too complicated, like in the past, right? So, just suggestions, I mean.
And, yeah, again, this is for the petition, I mean.
And it was pointed out that the board is not obligated to vote it in, even if fifty-one percent of landowners and property owners even choose it. The board doesn't have to do that, that's in there as well, right?
Yeah, that's right.
And then, any more questions for staff? Public comments? Nobody here, just.
So, so I do want to mention that you all are the local planning agency and your job not only is to be the keeper of the comprehensive plan, but also your land development regulations. This is a part of your code, which is the land development regulations. And so I, I think, I think where, wherever you fall down on this, if you're going to make a, take a vote with a recommendation. And if there's part of that has to do with this fifty-one percent, then I think we need to make that clear. But I do think you need to have a formal vote on it.
So, yeah. You know, and. Do we have motion before we do comments, is that?
Yeah, so is it, is it, it's my understanding that you're. That the fifty-one percent property ownership. Piece of this is, does not seem to.
Troublesome.
Be favorable to you all that maybe they should come out or that without you want, you want to vote. If you say you want to vote and recommend approval of this ordinance without the fifty-one percent ownership. Caveat or, or part. And I think, was the radius also changed on that?
Well, okay, so. So. Trying to see, so the Heritage Preservation Board Public Hearing, it's, it's published in the newspaper. And all the affected property owners are notified. By, by first class mail, so, so instead of a mailed radius. And we didn't, yeah, Renee didn't put a radius in here, she just got, we just put. So all the owners, so whether we have support from fifty-one percent or not, they're going to get this notice. So that, that maybe addresses part of it. You could take it out, you could maybe let, the board could have, have the ability to waive it if they want to do that. Or you could maybe say, the Board of Commissioners may ask staff to. I don't know, poll or obtain a vote of fifty-one percent if they want to when they get to that. I mean, there's different things you could do if you don't want to take it all the way out. But they do, every property owner would get the notice and they'd get that at the address on property appraiser.
So am I out of turn if I ask a question?
Still in staff comments?
Okay, yeah.
So, so thinking that it doesn't have a radius and it just has a percentage. Let's take Tarpon Avenue. How many owners do we have? Not business owners, property owners.
You mean residential?
Nope, just business owners on Tarpon Avenue.
Yeah. How many, I don't, I don't know.
Because I'm, I'm concerned that in some areas, we have a monopoly of business owners. And fifty-one percent, I mean, we have some people that own a lot of property. And do they squeeze out? The others? That might have their own.
They still only get one vote.
They get one vote, but they only get one vote even if they have. Okay, I understand they only get one vote if four people own a property, but if they own ten properties, do they get a vote per property?
Yes, one per property, but it's not a criteria for making a designation, so.
This is just for submitting it, right? This is simply, this is like who can initiate it? So you, the, the HPP board can initiate it, this is just about initiating it.
So, Pat, is it, I think maybe the distinction is that it's not, the way that it comes off is these are the people that can make it. But I think it's saying, is there any support? Does, do people want this, right?
Yeah, that's the idea.
Right, but I think it's not coming off that way, like I, I think that's, because then there's like, but also then a nonprofit can, which clearly they're not going to just say that. There's support, that's somebody who wants to like probably start, you know, push, push this through, so. And I think, I think that's the, the issue here is that that's, the distinction is that it dies if we don't get that, right? And I don't think that. I don't know if it maybe needs to be almost like separate from. You see what I'm saying, like, because like, we've had Tina come down, which, you know, Ms. Bucavales, who's for the Greek Town, you know. But I don't know if everyone in the, you know, union, like that they've been like notified, you know, especially with everything going on. And then the CRA is kind of like an odd, it's such a, you know, we just recently went over that, which is very thorough. Now I, I just learned all those boundaries myself. Yeah, the newspaper is technically the requirement, but let's be real, no one's looking at the newspaper to see if these things are coming out. So, I mean, we really want, like with the new city manager, trying to do all this redevelopment and we're going to throw this in the mix. I just want to make sure that like everything, wouldn't want to, we've put a lot of work into this, I don't want it to go like to, you know, just maybe. Like, like a separate motion to pursue, like, you know, I don't know, for the, to the interest before it goes to the BOC. Because. I just don't feel like the proper parties have been notified. It seems like it's kind of one district and the other two are just kind of there and it just go right through. And then all these other districts are just wrapped into it now all of a sudden.
Are you talking about doing that for this ordinance before you tonight?
Well, I don't know, I'm just asking, I mean, this is pretty important from what Attorney Dickman said, like we want to make sure that it's like.
The vision was that it could be used for other parts of the city. Union Academy in particular, and it's just setting up a framework. It doesn't really do anything, in fact.
So then like there's going to be like, I guess maybe the platform, like what happens next? You know, because this is like the first time we've ever done it, right? So what's next? I think that's the.
What's next is if this passes, it's in the, the process is now in Article seven.
Because like my fear is like what's next is everybody has to come here and paint their door.
Yeah, someone would have to then propose an overlay, that would be the next step. I don't know who, when, or what that is at this point. Yeah, I mean.
Like next steps or something like that, add maybe like what's next or something? And I think this is like the first time we've done anything like this. Ever, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's like a historic district, but like I say, it's historical, like it's, it's just a.
But the historic district was put in here, what year?
Well, the national was nineteen ninety, I believe, and then the local was twenty-ten, I believe.
So, and yeah, I mean, I just want, I guess to know the process because people are just, when you watch the historic preservation meetings, they're very like, it's a lot, like, you know. Looking at windows and affording, you know, this is a hundred thousand dollars. They want them to pay three hundred thousand dollars and that's really terrifying to anybody.
Yeah, which is why we kept the tables so simple. If people want to add that in later for the overlay they're proposing, that's fine, if not.
This just basically brings the concept.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, some of the stuff, some of the areas you all were concerned about during the Gaunt Plan, South Pinellas. I don't know if this is something that could be used in areas north of the river. That kind of thing, South Pinellas is a good example of, there's a lot of older buildings there. That could be an overlay that starts to try to plan and address for a mix of annexed and non-annexed. You know, you've got some county standards that are pretty intense along that corridor. I mean, it could be used, this is putting the framework in place to, to have some mechanism to be able to. To kind of mold into what you want for your character, identity of your district. And to answer kind of your point. I would say, so we've started on the CRA, I haven't heard anything, and, and I'm kind of talking out of my element. Cause I'm just peripherally involved with that, haven't heard anything about expanding the boundaries of the current CRA. Just trying to expand, trying to re-up it so extended, so we can go past twenty-thirty.
Is that possible to expand the boundaries?
Um, yeah, but I think, I, I think it is. But I think it's going to be enough work to get it through the county to ask for ten more years. So that, and so the rest of the, the docks. You know, there's part of that's, that's in the CRA, but, but not a big part, the rest of the docks, like you're saying, just the residential. Maybe that's an overlay by itself, if commercial wants to do, maybe that's one by itself. You know, one, once this CRA and smart code revisions start to. Start to kind of, we're, we're going to be, we're starting on that pretty fast, start to play out and kind of fall out where they are. Then I think we can see, do we need conservation overlay? And, and if so, where, you know? So, I, I think having, then we will already have this mechanism in place. If we want to, if there really is an issue, we want to tweak it again later, we can. I mean, if you noticed, doing this NCO, we've gone back and changed a couple of things, like the five hundred foot. Certificate of Approval really should be Certificate of Appropriateness. None of us can figure out why it was changed, everyone else in the whole world, including the state. So we took the opportunity to change a few more things, no reason we can't do that again. Yeah.
Is it ready for a motion?
Are, are we willing to make a motion?
Well, I think we need to, to do, just to discuss it, just to discuss it. Even if we don't, yeah. So, do you want to?
I mean, with regard to the fifty-one percent, if you have a concern about it. Obviously, there's been some concern expressed in other, from others. You could, you know, vote that way, like if overall you're in favor of this ordinance. But have a general concern that needs to be expressed to the Board of Commissioners, then you would state it like that. I don't think, I, I think staff could probably come up with, either just delete it or rephrase it or use it for something else, I'm not sure. I don't think you have to come up with a solution here, unless you just want to say delete it.
I mean, and we can, but, so just to discuss it, so someone make a motion to.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll make that motion to approve application number twenty-two dash one twelve in ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash oh one. For the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay Districts with concern. As far as the definition and clarity of the fifty-one percent of whether it be landowners, property owners or participating businesses or, or homes therein.
Okay. Board discussion? We'll start at the end and then, because we never, we never start that on that side, so.
But, so, so we've just basically made a motion now to consider it further? Or we're not deleting that piece out of the document is what you're saying?
So, so to discuss it at all, at all, we have to make a motion, even if we're, even if we don't want to approve it at all? So Mr. Rockline already made the motion with that in the condition and we can, we can clear it up. But I mean, it's, it's a legislative item, so I think it's, 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 we're, we don't have to vote for it, we can amend it, we can, someone can make a new motion. But we can discuss it now that it's been seconded.
So the other, the other concern was that who's, who's actually enforcing this?
The city staff.
The city staff?
City staff, yeah, the Land Development Code is enforced by the.
Okay, so, so once it's enacted, city staff's responsible for. Either denying or approving or, or, what's the word that you use? It would go to the Historic Board first?
Yes, so, so what you're doing.
Recommendation or not?
Yes, so right now you're making, you're, the motion is to, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners an action. You want them to move it forward, to approve it, deny it, or you could, you could ask them to, to move it forward. But you have concerns and I've got what Mr. Rockline has in his motion. If the ordinance is passed, it's like anything else in the Land Development Code, staff administers and enforces the provisions of the code. In this case, the, the, the NCO is a process, so staff would create an application, take in applications. These things would probably go, I can't remember, she put TRC, the Technical Review Committee. It would go there if it specifies, we would schedule it, advertise it for public hearing before the Heritage Preservation Board. And, and then it would come before, it, it has to be an ordinance that would come before you and it would come before the Board of Commissioners. So staff would. When someone proposes an NCO, staff would carry it through the process.
I'm trying to understand where this differentiates. From the, the process right now.
It's a different district, so the process right now only applies to the local historic district already established in the city. This is different because. If you look, let me just. If you look at pages eight and nine, eight to, yeah, eight and nine, you're going to see a long list. Of things that the Historic Board looks at when they look at an application. That's the process that's in place. This one would, puts a process in place that. Does not have that detailed list. It can become detailed if, if whoever's proposing the overlay wants to propose that, the board wants to do that. But the process in place only applies to the existing historic district.
So this is expanding the districts?
Uh, this would provide a process for someone to propose a new district.
Do we, do we, do we feel like we, that our Historic Board is, is at a point with their board members to handle the potential?
That's, that's not really up for our discussion tonight, so that's not really what we're being asked to vote on at the time, so.
Yeah.
And so technically we're past, I mean, it's kind of a nice night where nobody's here, but technically staff, you know, questions are over, it's most. Like board discussion, but, you, I mean, and, and just to, Attorney Dickman, just to clarify, for legislative, we kind of have to just vote the way it is? Or not the way it is, I mean, we can't condition it, is that? I mean, we can say what we.
Yeah, you can recommend, you can, you are a recommending body, so your job is to recommend. So right now the motion on the table is to approve the ordinance with, with direction from staff. That there is a concern about the fifty-one percent provision and that perhaps they'll come up with something more definitive about it. Now, you can do your own word crafting if you want to do it here, or.
And that's the thing, so we don't have to keep, like if, we can discuss, but as long as Robert's motion is on, that we can discuss anybody else's, you know, type of, however you want to say it. But, but, but for tonight's purposes, we don't. however you want to say it, but, but, but for tonight's purposes, we don't, we can't vote, like, the other considerations as far as, like, is the Board able, you know, to do that, is not really under our purview tonight? The Historic Board, whether they can handle.
Uh, yeah, I mean, your job is, I mean, you really have to not think about who's on the Board, you have to think about, like, what the Board's powers are in, in the code, because that's how it's set up, is for that Board to take on a number of different responsibilities, just like your responsibilities are expressed in the, in the code as well.
But I think one of her questions or concerns, if I'm not mistaken, is that not all areas are going to be historic area. They're going to have overlays, and they're going to have requirements, but they're not going to have, you know, so not everything is always going to go through the historic view board, correct?
So, so the ordinance uses the existing framework, doesn't set up a new framework. The historic, when, when you, when someone proposes an overlay, when a Board, if the Board adopts an overlay, it's going to have a list of items to be reviewed. It may or may not have guidelines, it'll have standards for those. Right now, we have a Board that reviews structural, basically structural, architectural, and those types of, of items, and that is our Heritage Preservation Board. So that's the Board we would use. Like I said, if there was a need for a new or different Board, that could be addressed when the overlay's established.
I think at one point, you know, not that when they do this immediately, but you were even saying you could have templates for new areas.
I'm sorry, I can't quite hear what you're.
I think we were talking about you could even have these templates for all different areas. And some areas could be like a new little suburban community. Why would they need the heritage?
That's what this is, a template for new areas.
I think it's the vocabulary, I think it's the words that are, it's the word, I think it's, the only Board that we have is the heritage, it's not that it's actually historic or.
Right, I mean, you know, it kind of came about more for historic areas, but I, I'm not sure, I, I mean, if you're talking, say, the single-family neighborhoods west of the bayou, I guess this could be used for that, I'm not sure.
I don't think.
Yeah, I'm not sure what you would, I, I would say that's probably not real likely to.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is exactly what you're saying. That's not an area where you would use, I mean, I would be concerned if we had to use the Board for, that, that group for all different entities in this, in this, in our, in our city, because their expertise is really focused, you know, they could be experts in a lot of different areas, but we're not going to set those tough requirements, I wouldn't think. We'd have templates, but in other areas of the city.
Ms. Early, did you have a? Why would anyone want?
I don't think we can hear you.
Why would anyone want or desire, what's the, what's, to be a part of the district? Why, why would you want that as a business?
Good question.
I'm, no, I?
No, it is a good question. It's a lot.
Um, yeah.
No, but it's, so I think, I think the, the thing here is that if this is something that's wanted, we might consider creating a Board that could handle something like this. If there's a need, if there's a, if there's a demand for it, right? I think Mr. Vestie brought up in Dunedin, they have that, like, what is it, that, I think it was, Renee was here and, and Mr. Salzman for the, like, the sun, the sky, like the sunset view or whatever, like, you have to see the sunset in your neighborhood or something, you know what I mean? So no one can build the house over that, right? And so his point was like, well, why do we have to be in a historic, but neighborhood to have a, our own separate rules for where we live, right? And so then everybody could have their own. Clearly, that would burden Historic Preservation Board, any Historic Preservation Board, not, not, you know, not counting whoever's on there right now. All our Boards, you know, that's a different, that's a separate issue. But I think if there's a desire for it, then that, we would go from there, is that, that maybe there could be another Board? Because if there's nobody that wants it, right, based on the 51%, and it dies, I think is the, kind of what would happen, right?
This, this whole ordinance came forward because the identity and character of Greettown, the residential area, Sponge Docks, the commercial area, and, and Union Academy. An area that's not in a flood zone largely. There's some danger of gentrification there, you're getting some demolitions and rebuilds over there, that, those types of things. So, so, so we did hear that there are people out there that do want it, that's the whole reason this came forward. Now, you know, when one is proposed, then it'll work through the process and, and you'll get down to the nitty-gritty of, you know, do the people that live in the area proposed really want it? And if they do, under what circumstances, what standards, what level? Which is why we only started with new construction and demolition.
And so technically, like, an entirely different group could come through the CRA and apply it, it doesn't even, not even named in here, right? Like, the South Side. I mean, it doesn't really apply to just one group, these are just the ones that are identified. So it's a framework for if it's ever needed, and if it's not needed, then it just goes away, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so I, I guess, and that's just talking through it, because it's, we've never had one before, I'm just trying to understand it as well, so. I think that's a good question, you know, I mean, if there was a lot of people that would want it, maybe they'd be here tonight, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, truly, I just, I'm sitting here thinking, what is the draw? I mean, what is the benefit of being a part of a historic district? I mean, what's the benefit? Why would they want it?
Well, I mean, I mean, there's, so, I mean, to where I live, you know, I live in the residential area of Greettown, and all the homes are a certain way, you know, and they're, but they have been sold, and they're still that way. And there is a new home that doesn't look like that, and I've been by her house, she's a very nice lady, and with Christmas lights, it looks just the same as everybody else's house, okay? But, you know, it, it's to keep that character of the framework, of the porches and everything like that, so, I mean, and this is a very odd house, but, but here's the thing, once you, that's new development, you put that on, everybody, it's expensive, that's, you know, that's the HPP, those people, you know, they, now, people that buy those homes are voluntarily buying into that, knowing that that's what they're doing, right? Here, we would be voluntarily asking, you know, to put restrictions on ourselves, which is.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we have, yeah.
CRA area, not to generalize, but there's a lot different socioeconomic area in a lot, and I mean, you've got to be reasonable in what expectations, not that they can't do it in some of the areas, but.
Haven't, they're not developed at all, I mean.
I mean, we're not going to worry about the kind of windows that they put on, as long as our windows are safe. I mean, that's what I would assume, you know, we're not going to ask them to put the wood windows, that costs three times as much and lasts half as long. In the historic district, but, but we're kind of being better at it right now.
Not, not in the auspices.
I think, I think that when Pat, the, the origination of this came from one area, and I think that is a concern, because it's listing multiple areas and, you know, they're not here. And, and those are not, to me, they're very underdeveloped, some not developed at all. I mean, so they'd be putting restrictions on business districts that don't even exist yet.
So the, the res, I thought the residential.
Well, this is meant for areas that are mostly developed, have some kind of character and identity that's definable. Usually, it would be older established areas, maybe, you know, it's not, I, I mean, I don't want to say, certain areas can't apply for one, but it's not really meant for west of the bayous and newer neighborhoods. There's, there's really no need that I can identify to have, have something misused for something like that.
And I think it's important to remember that we're just considering the process to provide people the opportunity to create something if they so choose, if they have a preponderance of landowners, and, and if they feel it's important enough that they want to galvanize or define their particular area. So this is just creating the, the opportunity, it's not going forward with the formal process, who's going to govern it, who's going to enforce it, it's just saying, if you feel you want to do this, you know, it's, it's like the, the phone number for a pizzeria, you know, here it is. If you want a pizza, call and order. Do you want it delivered or picked up? That's up to you. We're not forcing pizza on anybody, it's just the process.
Yeah, I mean, don't think about the person that necessarily brought it up, think about the opportunities it provides to other people, you know?
We, as we work with some of these neighborhoods, assuming this, this passes, that, that opportunity will be provided, you know, in community engagement.
The new city manager's, you know, has, you know, basically said that he's, you know, does like something called like a road show, where he brings out, you know, that's what we did too.
No, so the Board, the Board will, it's an ordinance, so the Board will consider the ordinance and, and pass some form of this if they so choose or not. If, if they do pass it, then it will become part of our Land Development Code. Like Ms. Francis noted, we're having, the new city managers having these kind of town hall meetings, we have Connect Tarpon Springs, where we have a lot of people to get the city news, we advertise there. We're working with some of the neighborhoods, like Union Academy, right now, we're working on a CRA for them. They would be notified when this passes, so they know the opportunity, so we'll kind of get the word out that way.
And, and I feel that this is just a step for folks to take, for business owners to take, whoever, in what would be a multi-step, very transparent process. So it's just that, it's just leaving the door open a crack, or unlocked, basically, for someone to come in and make a public comment, for someone to come in and leave a letter, or something of that nature. You know, it just, just gives that hint of opportunity, instead of saying a flat, well, we don't have, we don't have that process, and we'd have to commence it now. At least this kind of puts the knife and fork on the table for the food.
And Pat, anybody can appeal an HPP decision to the Board of Commissioners, and their, their criteria is basically nothing, right?
Yeah, the, the appeal section in, as we've got it here, the only thing we changed right now was the mail radius. So you're right, there's really no set criteria in that section. Yeah, the HPP has their own criteria for the historic district, but, you know.
So we still have the same motion?
You still have a motion on the floor, you've talked about it, so the motion, once again, is to approve the ordinance with comments to staff that you have concerns about the 51% provision.
And I noted how that is applied, what the definition and clarity of it would be with respect to landowners, property owners, business owners, that sort of thing, so we've got all that.
And, I, I mean, I don't know, maybe if it is in there, but maybe just, in this, in the memorandum, that it's like a framework for anything, right, I mean, because I don't think, the first thing I looked for was the three districts, and, you know, it's like a small paragraph, and it's Greettown, Union Academy, CRA, so it looks like, it's like, we're providing, like, these are going to be in this, right? Like, so, you know, that's how I read it, right? Like, this is going to apply to these areas, you know, but like, this is a framework for these areas or other potential.
I mean, yeah.
Maybe add like, or other potential overlays that are suggested, or something like that, maybe, because I think the framework part, I think we're just getting now.
These, these are the ones we heard about in engagement, but I can add that to the memo.
Yeah, so formal historic preservation districts are a lot of work.
Right.
They're a lot of work, you have to do reports, I mean, there's a lot into them, they're almost very difficult to establish. So this is kind of a lighter touch of, because you obviously have historic resources outside of the official historic district, that's very clear, and so the, the idea is to give a legal framework for preserving the character, or whatever, for the various reasons that are in here, that might be necessary. So this is kind of a lighter, a lighter process, historic light.
Even if it's not, is like enforceable, like if somebody who's coming into the district sees it, maybe they're just like, I don't want to mess with that. I mean, but that might be like a deterrent.
Well, like, so for example, but for, if it were designated a NCO, then it would have, it wouldn't have to go to a public hearing, you know, for certificate of appropriateness. So somebody might be like, yeah, I don't want to, I, I want it just as of right, you know, I want to deal with the underlying zoning and nothing else. And so this adds another layer, where you do have to go to a public hearing in order to get your certificate of appropriateness correct, yeah, to.
Even if it's easier, it's still, it's a little, like, kind of layer of protection, even if it's a light, lighter one, so.
But, so, you know, the reason why historic districts do work, and they work in a lot of places, is that when you have a, when it actually functions, it creates a synergy where, because, like, take South Beach, for example, largest collection of Art Deco buildings in our, and, and it was almost run down and torn up, and it came back, and same for you all, every historic district, it just takes a turnaround, and then all of a sudden, it's known as a, a really important place, because of its historic value.
But I mean, like, I think part of, of that's already there, so.
I think there are, there are also, what I experienced, it's been some time now, but where I used to live, it was a little historic area, and I actually had my office in that little historic area. And it was fabulous, because there were grant monies available to all those businesses if they want, I can't remember the amount, but to improve, you know, the property owners, to improve and stick with the historical requirements or themes, but to update their office fronts and their building fronts, and it was, it was pretty neat, I mean, a lot of people took advantage of it.
Well, there, there's facade grants available for everyone in the CRA right now.
Oh, yes.
And actually, we get benefits from just being in the National Historic District in Greettown as well, which I don't think have been really related to everybody, they've been given for things that maybe, but even that has given us awards, but no, everyone in the CRA has facade grant, can get a facade grant, and some people have gotten more than one. So, yeah, those are already available.
Good?
So do we want to take a vote?
At some point, you need to do something with the motion, it might die if you don't hurry.
Are you ready to vote?
Yeah.
Weaver? Head of Swenson? Yes? Ms. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, do we have anything else on the agenda, any staff comments?
No. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Attorney, Nick, Wendy.
No, the, the moment of reflection was beautiful, thank you for that, very nice. Happy holidays to all of you, I hope you, you and your family, the best.
Thank you.
You too.
Kim?
Hi.
Any board comments?
Not for me, no, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Nope.
I was just saying Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Remember, we were talking about the FEMA and the.
Remember, we were talking about the FEMA and
Um, yeah, I can, I can, if you desire, I'm not sure how much you have on the next agenda.
Yeah, I don't know.
I can give you a brief kind of update on what's going on with the, with the, you know, flood stuff, substantial damage and, and that, just, just kind of a quick update next month, if, if you want to do that.
All right, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.
Bye.